Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Cordero Madera Planning Commission for Tuesday, October 23rd. And please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf, would you call the roll?
Commissioner McCaff.
Here.
Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Bendel.
Here.
Thank you. At this point in the meeting, we ask for public comment on anything that is not on tonight's agenda. So if you've got something on your mind that is not further on in the agenda, of which there's only one item, you have three minutes to speak to that at the microphone. I don't see anybody wanting to do so. So we will then leave and close the public comment section and move on to our business item. So tonight, we are here for a cannabis ordinance discussion, presentation and discussion of the development of a town ordinance regulating cannabis-related businesses and personal cultivation. Mr. Boyle will lay out the past of the town's presentation of this. And we're at lands and we're here to do exactly what it says, discuss, make no decisions at this point tonight. So, Mr. Boyle.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Chase, planning commissioners. Yes, this is a discussion item to get your feedback and more public feedback regarding the development of a cannabis ordinance for the town. I have a PowerPoint slide that I'm going to go through. Within this, I have, you know, some background, various regulations dealing with discussion of local issues. I'll talk about the public survey that we have currently on the website and has been active for a couple of months. And then we'll have time, of course, for public comment, questions and answers, and some talk about next steps. This is very similar to the workshop agenda that took place when we did the two workshops in September. The goals of workshops were to provide information, share resources, gather opinions, and listen and engage in respectful dialogue. Our first workshop was quite heated at moments, so I added that last bullet for the second workshop. But it was all good. The cannabis ordinance webpage has been up since early September on that webpage, and you're welcome to go to at any time. We have the Cordero Madera ordinances, past ordinances, past staff reports and minutes. We have the public workshop materials as well as the videos from both those workshops. We have a link to the public survey. You can still take the public survey until October 31st, if you haven't already. Links to state and county resources, and then also, of course, to staff contact information. So please visit that page. In terms of the process, what we've engaged in in the past, again, the two public workshops, the public survey, we're having the planning commission this evening, and next stop will be the town council, with the goal of adopting or the goal of adopting a new ordinance no later than September 2019. A little bit of just brief background in cannabis itself, some definitions here of cannabis, marijuana, THC, other types of ways cannabis can be ingested by edibles, things like that. So I won't go into detail of any of these, but certainly if you have any questions, we can, I can address any questions that you have. And again, all these, all this information is on the town website as well. Using the term medicinal cannabis and non-medicinal cannabis, and that's become, has become kind of the standard, as opposed to recreational cannabis or adult cannabis, I think medicinal and non-medicinal is clear, and it seems to be, again, the standard. Cannabis is still illegal per the federal government. It's, you know, considered a class-one drug, and so that's why each state has different cannabis rules and regulations. Just the history of some of the major cannabis laws that have come to fruition in California, going back to, this is just, you know, some of the major ones, not all of them, of course, going back to 1996, when we had Prop 215 legalized medicinal cannabis. And then gradually, we had more legislation dealing with non-medicinal, or I guess that adult use here, until the last act was 2017, SB 94, which was a Medicinal and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, which integrated California's medicinal regulations with the non-medicinal or recreational systems. And in bringing those two together, the state created these three entities of the main governing bodies that address various issues regarding cannabis in California, the Bureau of Cannabis Control, California Department of Food and Agriculture, and the California Department of Public Health. And then underneath each one of those have various categories that they, that they regulate. All these, again, are on the, on the website. And I do have a number of handouts in the back from the Bureau of Cannabis Control dealing with a variety of different issues for people to take home. All these state regulations do still give some authority to local governments, and local governments, local towns and cities have the ability to set certain limits on personal cultivation, both indoor and outdoor. We'll go into a little bit more detail of those. Towns can prohibit or restrict medicinal and non-medicinal cannabis businesses, you know, which we have done, you know, to date. Towns can impose taxation, and towns can determine types of licenses and permits, you know, what process various activities need to go through. So all that is up to, for us to decide if we wish. The current legislation in Cordero Madera is, again, back in, back in 2017. Adam brought an ordinance to the town council, which basically was the initial urgency ordinance and urgency moratorium on cannabis-related businesses. So we needed to do that before January of 2018, because if we didn't do that before 2018, then we'd have to fall underneath the state rules. And so basically, by putting that ordinance into effect, we put a hold and said, okay, you know, freeze everything the way it is, and, and we want to study this issue and go through the public process, which, what we're going through now. So we established a temporary prohibition on medicinal and non-medicinal cannabis-related businesses from operating in the town. That ordinance was extended twice, and, and now expires in September 19, 2019. And again, prior to that, that date, we're going to create our own ordinance. Want to jump in?
Yeah, just like to add one little piece to that. While it did require or prohibit medicinal and non-medicinal businesses from operating or locating in the town of Cordero Madera, it did not restrict, or rather, it followed state rules regarding the personal cultivation up to the limits set by the state, which was six plants for personal cultivation. It left intact the medicinal cultivation regulations as well, and also allowed for delivery businesses located outside of Cordero Madera to provide delivery services to residents or other customers inside of Cordero Madera. So that's the full scope. So the main thrust of it was though is really prohibiting the business aspect of cannabis.
Yep. Thank you. And with that current, so what's currently allowed in Cordero Madera today, if you're over the age of 21, you may consume cannabis, and you may possess it, two point, sorry, 28.5 grams, or about an ounce, of non-concentrated cannabis, or six grams of concentrated cannabis products. Accessories you're allowed to possess. Cultivation, as Adam said, you're allowed to cultivate six plants for your personal use. You're allowed to cultivate an additional 12, the six plus an additional 12 immature plants, if you have a medicinal card. And you're allowed to cultivate this within the private residence or on private property. The property must be in a locked space and not visible from a public place. The plants must be 10 feet from property lines, and the parcels must be 100 feet from schools, churches, parks, libraries, or childcare centers. And as Adam's saying, delivery is allowed in Cordero Madera today, if the location is outside the town and bringing product into the town. What's currently prohibited in Cordero Madera, again, mainly the state says this, is consuming cannabis in a public place, consuming it in a vehicle, being under the influence, providing cannabis to minors under 21 for non-medicinal use. Employers may maintain drug-free workplaces, so they can, you know, employers can basically be more strict than the, than the state, because, very similar to tobacco smoking, you know, requirements, they can, they can limit that. There's no smoking within 1,000 feet of school, daycare, child center. Commercial uses that are prohibited are, like Adam mentioned before, basically all cannabis-related businesses except deliveries. And then possession that is prohibited is over the allowed limits and on grounds of schools, daycares, and so on. So just one thing, in considering activities for this ordinance, and things you want to be thinking about as we have this discussion, is, you know, what types of, do you want, does the town want businesses? What types of businesses? What type of cultivation limitations do you want to put on for personal consumption? And I'll talk a little bit about these various license types. There are many, many licenses, license types, many, many licenses, these are the types. We have retailers. We have retailers non-storefront. In other words, it's a, it's a business that doesn't have customers come up to the door and purchase something and walk away. They are, you're contacted, like a delivery business, that you're just contacted by phone or by email, and they send out vehicles from that business, but no customers come to the front door. Other types of licenses are distributors, distributors that just transport from one location to another, testing laboratories, and micro businesses. Just an example of a retail dispensary, all of them have, you know, different looks to them, and this is just one, one example. Just a little bit more detail in terms of delivery, what type of delivery is allowed. It's the, you know, the transfer of the product, it includes the use by retail of any technology platform owned or controlled by the retailer. License, you must be a licensed operator, and delivery must be to an exact physical location. And there are many, many restrictions on, on different types of deliveries. Processing testing facilities can, can look, you know, like a typical office building or a typical industrial building, another thing to, you know, consider for the town. Again, processing, testing, and packaging, things like that. When we get into indoor cultivation, again, like I said, six plants. Indoor includes the growing in your residence itself, but also if you have an accessory structure, and that accessory structure is, is locked, and the plants are not visible, and is properly ventilated, then that is considered indoor cultivation. So you're not, you're, you know, if you have it in an accessory structure, but is in a locked, contained building, that's considered indoor. So if, if for one, for some reason, if the town chose to outlaw or prohibit outdoor cultivation, that doesn't limit one from having a very secure, locked, non-translucent greenhouse in their backyard growing their plants. So that's just the distinction. The town can, so the town cannot prohibit indoor cultivation. Indoor cultivation is allowed under those, those parameters. The state will not let us completely prohibit it, but we can implement stricter, more reasonable regulations in terms of how that indoor cultivation takes place. Is a building permit required? Are inspections required? Do you have to show that you have the, you're not using excessive power compared to a normal residence? Water requirements. So those are some of the things that other jurisdictions, and I'll talk about a little bit more, have implemented to restrict indoor cultivation, but you can't prohibit it outright. Conversely, we can prohibit outright outdoor cultivation. We also can't make the state rules more lenient. We can't tell people, you can have 12 plants in outdoor. So we can, we can restrict, but we can't make it more permissive or lenient. So this is kind of what I talked about before in terms of potential regulations for indoor, you know, prohibiting the use of generators, fire and building code, those types of things. So summary of the two workshops, we had pretty good attendance. We had, one was on Wednesday evening. On the 12th, we had 23 attendees, 18 of them signed the signup sheet as residents of Cordero Madera with actual, you know, businesses, I'm sorry, actual addresses in town. And Saturday, we also had mainly residents, 15 out of 16. Central Marin Police Chief Mike Norton was there to, to give any information that he had. The audience saw a presentation by staff. We had questions and answers and a lively discussion, and both, both workshops lasted for about two hours. There were many opinions expressed on a variety of different issues. We had parents, we had individuals from the medicinal cannabis industry, we had, of course, concerned citizens, and a number of physicians that were also residents giving their opinions. So I encourage you all to watch the videos if you haven't already. And then the, the videos and handouts are all on the website. The public opinion survey, again, was launched on the 7th of September, finishes it up the end of this month. It was publicized in our newsletter, on the reader board, on Nextdoor. And as of last Friday, we had 343 completed surveys. Eighty-two percent of them are residents that, you know, indicated an address that's legit in town. And all examples of, of the public opinion surveys in the staff report, as well as the whole, and all the results are in the back of the staff report. So in terms of what jurisdictions, other jurisdictions in Marin, what their ordinance say, I did it by category. It's a little bit easier rather than have such a long list. So basically jurisdictions that allow deliveries into their jurisdiction, such as Cordero Madera, are those five there. Ones that allow only medicinal are the county Fairfax, Mill Valley, and so on. Non-storefront businesses, like as I talked about before, Marin County and Fairfax, Santa Fel, and Nevada have testing-only non-storefront businesses. I should say maybe don't have them, but allow them in their, in their ordinance. Fairfax has a storefront retailer medicinal dispensary. Outdoor cultivation, Santa Fel, Cordero Madera, Fairfax, and San Anselmo, I'm sorry, right, allow outdoor cultivation. Fairfax and San Anselmo have specific additional regulations in their ordinance regarding outdoor cultivation. They don't ban it, but they have additional restrictions. And Marin County allows medicinal cultivation only. Jurisdictions that have imposed additional indoor cultivation requirements are shown there on the right. And I should have included, I forgot to add Nevada. Nevada has additional indoor requirements. So what staff is looking for, the questions we have for you this evening are seeking your direction on how these activities should be addressed in our ordinance. Should we allow businesses such as medicinal or non-medicinal sales in Cordero Madera? Should we allow delivery service, again, services where the base is located in town or outside of town, or both? Should we allow manufacturing, testing, and so forth? And then what, if any restrictions, do we want to put on personal cultivation? What's allowed per indoor and what's allowed per outdoor?
You want to add anything to that one?
Yeah, if I, if I may just add, and trying to seek some input here, I think there's two, or actually, well, there's really about two broad categories. One relates really to the cannabis business aspect of this, and what we want to do is Cordero Madera related to our ordinance. And so the question is, do we want to allow for cannabis-related businesses in Cordero Madera? If so, what type of businesses? And I think it might be helpful, especially for the planning commission, to opine on are there particular locations in town that might be more suitable than others? So that's one big bucket, and I'm not, we're not expecting you to get in maybe all the answers tonight, but if there are other, if there's also additional information you think is important in assessing this, that would be helpful as well. And we'd like to take this input and bring it on actually to the town council as the next step, which Phil will talk about in a second. And then secondly, there's this question related to cultivation and personal cultivation, indoor and outdoor. And there's a variety of questions that I think Phil covered in some detail in the slides, so we don't need to reiterate, but just in terms of framing the conversation a little bit, I thought that might be helpful to think of it in that way.
I did want to go back one slide if I could, because I know a commissioner asked for me to reach out to some jurisdictions that have cannabis businesses. So I had a long conversation with Sebastopol. Sebastopol has had a medicinal dispensary for about a decade, and that dispensary has grown to be a medicinal dispensary as well as a non-medicinal dispensary. They have had no, I talked to the planner in charge of those, that application, they have had no problems, significant problems over the last 10 years and not over the last year, year and a half, when it added non-medicinal. They also have a new, a new, a new retail outlet in Sebastopol that it also, and so far is not causing a lot of problems, they have not had additional calls from police or anything like that. It's a process that they've gone through. I also gathered some information on the Catati. There's also a facility in Catati. Again, has a storefront where one can go in, you know, if you're over 21 and buy non-medicinal, and if you're between 18 and 21, or you're over 18, you can buy medicinal with, with a card. Talked to the manager there, not a significant, they went through a long process with their town and talking to the police, and according to them, you know, things are, things are working well. I did reach out to Fairfax, but didn't, didn't get a call back, but I can certainly do additional research on other jurisdictions if you wish. So that pretty much wraps up my staff presentation. Again, looking for your feedback on these issues, and certainly welcome to answer your questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Did you have something else you wanted to add, Adam?
Well, I, just in terms of next steps, I think, you know, what we'd like to do is obviously hear from you all this evening, as much consensus as we might be able to define amongst you all or not, but take what information and input you have on sort of these major, these fundamental questions, I will call them, as we think about the ordinance. And our thought is the next step would really be to go and discuss this as well with the town council in a workshop format, just so they can provide some more of the broad policy direction, especially as it relates to businesses and business activity in town. And with that, we may be able to have more detailed information about how to craft an ordinance that could then obviously come back to the planning commission and make its way up ultimately through the process. And obviously, the council is the, is the final decision-maker on any ordinance that the town would want to adopt.
Okay, thank you. So what you're saying, before I turn it over to other commissioners to ask questions, is that it's not a sequential process here. It's a one where you're going to play tag with different elements of jurisdiction here, so to speak, the town council, one of them, to get their input, and we'll all listen to that. And I'm not hearing that there's a direct urgency to get to the council from us immediately, and that if we, and then the question out of that is, so if we decide that we want more information before really passing anything on, how does that affect your plan for the ordinance progression?
You know, I think what I would say would be that if there are aspects and certain information feels critical to answering this question, I would also like to pass that up and along to the council so that they may consider that recommendation, that we delve deeper into certain issues, but allow them to sort of provide their direction as well on that, whether that's deemed or seen as necessary or not at this time. Well, in the next couple of months, whenever we get to them, which is, would be the next step, which we don't have a date yet.
Right.
But, you know, in the meantime, you know, obviously, staff can also, while we're doing that, start embarking upon some of, you know, research, additional research that the commission would like us to look into further and/or address and sort of, but we want to keep the process going and not necessarily get stuck and held up and without sort of making progress and getting sort of feedback and, and information that we think would be valuable to include in an ordinance and valuable for the commission also to understand when we actually craft this, a draft ordinance for consideration.
Okay. Well, thank you. There's not a lot of people here tonight, and there's been more people at these sessions that you've held, so that, you know, we would then be hearing from less than 1% of the town's population at this point, you know. So I would entertain or hope that we would get to hear more from people as time goes by here in this process, because it is, it is, it's not a small issue, it's a big issue, and it's one that, once the genie is out of the bottle, it's not going to go back in. So I think we have to be thoughtful and consider it with this one. So with that said, before I ask any questions, I'm going to ask the other commissioners for their questions of staff at this time, Phyllis.
Okay, a couple of questions. It's interesting that you talk about the number of people who showed up when this was on our agenda in the past, closing what had been a successful operation down on Tamil Vista, but they had gotten their permit saying that it was for a different product, and we found out the room was packed. And we heard from a lot of people, and we really learned a lot, and I wish those people had shown up tonight, because I thought it was very helpful. That particular operation, from what I can remember, that was successful, was medicinal, there was security, cards were carefully checked, there had been no problems, and this is the part I've been trying to remember all day. I think the product that was sold had to be consumed on the premises, and I'm wondering if, what, the candies and the cookies and stuff, they were, you were able to buy to take it with you. Okay? Because I know there were all sorts of checks and balances done. And as I say, that was a very successful operation, and we should look to how that was set up if we are going to have an operation. The one in Fairfax, which is, I think someone's first name is Lynette.
Lynette Shaw.
Yes, thank you. She had one in Fairfax for many, many years. The town, city allowed it. There were no problems. I do not know if it was limited to medicinal, but it was a successful operation, and the only reason it closed is that the feds went after the owner of the building. which he had been in already for 15 years or maybe even longer, and told the owner of the building that they would prosecute him if he did not evict her. So I think there are businesses that work. I don't have a problem with having a business. My preference is for medicinal marijuana, but that's a personal thing.
Out of all of that, about Fairfax and so forth, is there anything that you would like to ask staff about the function of that? I hear a question in there about what it was exactly. It would have had to have been medicinal, I think.
Yes.
So that said, is there anything else you want them to tell you about that operation?
The one in Fairfax or the one in Corder Madera?
No, the one in Fairfax or either one?
I would like to know about both.
All right.
But especially the Corder Madera one, since it was right here in our town. I'm just looking at the retail part of it. I'm not going to pretend to know anything about testing or cultivation or any of those types of operations. I'll leave it to people who have better background than I do on it. I don't have a problem with the retail establishment. I certainly have no problem with delivery. And as I say, I am very pro marijuana for medicinal use, and I'd much rather see that than opioids, so.
Anything else that you would like to ask of staff at this point, before we?
No, I think they gave a pretty clear presentation, and I thought you wanted us to respond to their presentation.
Yeah, and with questions for staff before we go to public comment and so forth, yes. Dr. Bundy.
Yeah, Phil, currently, indoor cultivation is allowed. Do we require a permit for that, or inspection, or fee, or anything?
No, none of the above. It's basically, you can grow cannabis plants in your, in your house, just like you can grow any other type of house plant.
And so we would, police or planning would only hear about it if somebody complained that there were 100 plants and people were coming in at all hours to purchase and things like that.
Right, right, we would address it as a, as a code enforcement issue if we want to complain.
The, I was also questioning some of the requirements about distances from schools and such. If it's a private residence and it's indoor grow, what difference would that make? How far it was from a school, church, nursery?
I'm pretty sure that, I'm pretty sure that the distance from school nursery is for outdoor grows. I want to make sure I have that right.
And would that be just for commercial, not personal?
Cultivation, I'm, yeah, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure it is, is just outdoor, outdoor grows. I didn't put that specifically in the slide, that's a good, I will double check that.
Well, is that a problem if it's not visible, you know, from the street or from the fence and is in a locked backyard, from the standpoint of growing outdoors, which would be, you know, less carbon intensive than an indoor grow?
Yeah, and that's, and that's a discussion that the town will, will need to have and determine if, what are the pros and cons of outdoor grows?
But I think you're asking, I mean, that's a state requirement. That's not something that the town actually has any ability to change and make it less restrictive, even if it thought that.
Okay.
That, we will check whether that applies to indoor or outdoor and double check that. I think Phil is saying it thinks it applies to the outdoor. But, but that would be something that would, we could only say it has to be further from, rather than less than 100 feet or no, no limit on that. So, I mean, I understand the question. I, I'm not sure we necessarily, whether we think there's a problem or not with.
Yeah, no, if it's, if it's the state requirement, then we're stuck with that.
Yeah.
The, the other, so you're not really looking to license this? Or you're not really thinking that the planning department should require a permit or anything to grow six plants indoors, as long as it complies with the state of California?
We're not, I mean, staff isn't making a specific recommendation one way or another at this point. We're looking for input and feedback from the community and from the commission, of course, on, again, if we want to drill down specifically indoor, you know, what, what regulations do we want to add to indoor cultivation? Do we want to add any? And what are the pros and cons of having those additional restrictions or not having any?
Yeah, if this, this is something that the state says is allowed and we're not able to restrict, I think the planning department and the police probably have better things to do than to try to check individual residences for permits, fees, or inspection. The, the other issue of if we were to, if the town of Corder Madera was to approve a storefront or delivery service from a location in Corder Madera, this could be done, or we could craft it so it would be a conditional use permit, so that if problems did arise, that conditional use could be pulled?
We could do that, yes. And you can also limit, you know, in what zones it's allowed. Certain, other jurisdictions allow only a certain number of, you know, retail establishments within the jurisdiction. So there are a number of things you can do.
Yeah, that would, that would make sense. From the, from the standpoint of, it seems like manufacturing, testing, and processing would be done most likely in an area where cost of land issues are not as steep as they would be in Corder Madera. But again, these facilities are sort of nondescript warehouses, which we don't have a lot of space for or a lot of location for. But are any of, have any of those been a problem from the standpoint of, you know, theft, burglary, robberies, or anything associated with those operations that you're aware of?
I haven't, I haven't heard of any, but I also haven't researched that specifically.
Okay.
And again, if, if the town did want testing facilities, research facilities, you know, they could, again, a conditional use permit could be required. You know, design review could be required in terms of how these, what these buildings look like, security systems, lighting, all those kind of things.
Okay, thank you. Well thought out.
Okay, um, thank you, Charles.
Okay, I have a few. I think, one of the things we talked about, I'm sorry. I think one of the, a couple of things we talked about earlier was size. So earlier, we were talking about Colorado, where the market is more mature and that there would be smaller retail establishments, but there might even be, say, as large as a Macy's building type size, you know, Emporium or something that could come in. Is that true, like, you know, do we have statistics about like what the general size of these types of retail establishments are? And, you know, with the conditional use, would we want to tie something to that to maybe limit or maybe not, right? But just getting a sense of what that is, if you don't already know.
That's for, sorry, that's for retail?
For retail, right. The, on the retail side, I also had a question. Have you, have you had any feedback from the two large, the town center or the village, as far as their kind of, if they've had any interest internally within their, their, their ability to rent out? And then also establishments interested in, in being in that regional shopping center?
Right, no, I haven't heard anything from, from either shopping center, and neither represented. We're at the, we're at the meetings, public workshops. I haven't asked them that direct question either, so.
I would like to know at least what their, what their thoughts are, if they think it's something that they would even.
It's a model that might work.
I think that what we've seen where retail establishments have located to this point, we've seen in, like the one in Cotati's and more of us, it is in like an older strip mall shopping center. There's other retail establishments in a strip mall. Other ones, I haven't seen in a mall concept yet, but.
Right, I haven't seen in malls. I believe Sebastopol's are a little bit outside, you know, they're not. I know Cotati specifically says, you know, on certain streets and certain corridors. So I don't think they're allowed in their down, you know, old downtown Cotati, which is quite small. I don't know if Sebastopol has that same, but, but certainly, you know, you know, the town could, could pick particular locations. Well, I don't know how specific we can be on that, but certainly we can, we can designate zones.
Yeah, and both malls are in the C2 zone.
Can it be a special overlay?
Yeah, well, for example, the town center, it's almost like town center and the village right now are almost in their own overlay as well, because they're, they're the only properties that are zoned with C2 currently in our, in our ordinance. So, so theoretically, if that was, that could work there, if that was found to be the only appropriate spot for.
Has anyone broached the subject of the special tax that could be assigned? And like what the general ranges of taxes that might be, or have been applied?
Yeah, I mean, there are a wide variety of, you know, taxing policies that have been implemented in jurisdiction by jurisdiction. I think there's a, there's a large debate going on about that. Frankly, it's, it's one of the things that we would focus more with the town council on that aspect of appropriate taxing policies. But it's not something that we focused on necessarily at this time. I think these are, these are actually, you know, being visited very differently by different jurisdictions, and so we would, yeah.
Just asking the question.
Yeah, absolutely.
So then, another one is, is I see that for shared, like, cohabitation type uses, apartments, condos, that if it's owned by an entity, that you would have to get written permission to grow even indoors? Is that correct?
Yes, that's a, that's a, I'm going to check if that's already.
I didn't see it in the slides. But, so I guess to further on that, once that's clarified, is in some areas where condos are owned by individuals and their CCRs and other type smaller local control? How does, does that, does that have any special kind of, you know, when you share walls with someone else and that type of thing, is it still just considered your own property and you're allowed that indoor grow? It's, it's just a land use question I have a curiosity.
Yeah, that's a good one, because I, and I know there are restrictions on smoking of tobacco in, in apartment buildings.
Covenant.
Covenant, that's right. But the, but I believe that doesn't fall into the, you know, just the growing of, I believe it's allowed to grow cannabis. I know Nevada was wrestling with this, I was watching their video on it. And I believe it is, one is allowed to grow cannabis in one's apartment building if one is over 21 years of age.
Yeah, well, in a condominium on their property, otherwise, in an apartment building, it would require the landlord approval. But I would think, just to go on the condo, train of thought there, I think that's, it's a, it's a good question. But I imagine HOAs are going to have to start, if they haven't already, start thinking about how to amend CCNRs or, you know. But if, if those aren't amended, I would, my assumption would be at this point, they would be permitted, an individual condo owner would be permitted to cultivate on their property unless the town ordinance prohibits it. But it'll be interesting, actually, I will see what the enclave is doing with their CCRs and if they're, if they're incorporating anything related to this at this point in time or not.
Okay, and I was unable to attend both workshops, but with the, the police chief being there, was there any particular points that he made available to the public that you could share with me?
He was a member of the audience, he wasn't, you know, on the panel in terms of staff. It was myself and Sean Kennings, who's a consultant, who's helping us out. The police chief was there. There was an, he responded to one question from the audience asking, is there any value in, in being consistent with Larksburg or being consistent with the San Anselmo, given where Marin, Central Marin Police? And I think his response is, yes, there'd certainly be some value to that, but there's also so much, so much the state already dictates.
That's great, thanks.
So have you followed up with Larksburg?
I haven't, no, it was just a comment.
But also, I think, just to follow up, I think, Ted, he also said that there's plenty of ordinances that aren't aligned amongst the cities that they, you know, have to enforce regardless. So, you know, it's.
I think it's a good point, because they bleed boundaries, so where is that boundary? And being very conscious of those kind of minutia just complicate their, their work, so.
Yeah.
Do we know where Larksburg in particular is with going over ordinance and setting up guidelines?
Yeah, like I showed in, in this, they are where they are today, I can look on the date.
So they already had a rule, is this already codified, like in their zoning and?
So, and this is, these are kind of ever changing, to keep track of these is a little bit tricky. Marin County does a good job and produces an Excel spreadsheet that shows these. And so, you know, currently, I believe actually, March of 2018 was the last time the county updated this chart or a chart similar to this. Again, shows Larksburg allowing deliveries and allowing, you know, and having additional restrictions on indoor cultivation.
But outside of that, so if it's not listed, does that mean it's not allowed?
Correct, yeah, so it's not listed as, so currently it doesn't appear, Larksburg does not allow outdoor cultivation. And again, I'll give what San Anselmo does. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Charles, Margaret.
So in terms of how you're going to put together the ordinance or the regulations, you've done like the public surveys, listening to people at meetings, the town council, planning commission. Are you gonna, when you start crafting the law, the ordinance, are you going to look at like majority rules or take into account a more heavily weighted area of, or group of people than others? And do you have input from doctors and the police and the fire department? And how are you going to craft your resolution?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to, yeah, well, I'll, I'll start off. But yes, I mean, one of the reasons why we've had these workshops, there have been physicians and doctors, as we just talked about, the police. So they are providing input. We're asking the commission to take, read all of that and, and look at all that information that has been gathered to this point and, and make your own sort of interpretation, decision on how we should go about adopting regulations and rules on this. We'd like your input on that, so that we can also forward those, you know, that information and your recommendations up to the council. We're going to talk to the council about the same, probably have the same similar conversation as we're having with you. And they ultimately, as the folks who will be making final decisions on this ordinance, should also broadly outline a direction, we were hopeful, a direction for us to follow before we even start to craft the ordinance, so that we have sort of at least the broad parameters in place that, based again on all the public information that we've received and the commission's own thoughtful work, that we can use that as really the starting point for crafting an ordinance.
So the only.
I'm going to just add really quickly, is just like any other ordinance, being the council, the town council is the elected body for the town, really sets the direction for staff. It's not like staff just, you know, I mean, while they may in other circumstances make recommendations, you know, in this instance, very much like any other policy type of ordinance is, that direction will come from the council before staff starts drafting and bringing back any drafts for consideration.
So have you, other than the police chief who, who was at the council meeting, have you talked to the police or the fire department or the medical community individually or as a group, just them, about use?
No, not this time, there hasn't been any specific outreach, you know, to them. Again, this is the early stage of gathering information from everyone. But certainly, you know, the, the council meetings are going to be well publicized and possibly more attended when you get to that level. And we will certainly, you know, reach out if there's specific requests and ways in which, you know, to reach out to these various departments, we can certainly consider those.
And there's been, I mean, obviously, the Central Marin Police Authority, they're, they're going to be. And there's been, I mean, obviously, the Central Marin Police Authority, they're they're gonna be, you know, they're aware that towns are in jurisdictions, San and Selmo, Larksburg, Cordero are grappling with this issue. And they're 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 gonna be have input into the process and ultimately, the council, through the town manager, you know, will be involved to the extent that this field is is necessary and appropriate. If that's something that you think needs to be addressed and should be really relied upon, that's, you know, that's part of information that we can, you know, discuss here as well. But ultimately, that's the council is is the one that is going to be providing the direction on that. We we, you know, part of what we're doing is trying to gather, we have, like I said, we have had, public input can come from a variety of sources, those with expertise in the the medical industry, which we've heard at from on at some of the workshops. There's, obviously, there's been no, there's no, for people in the medical industry have debates about the, you know, the effects of cannabis and whether it's, there's public health concerns or or not or benefits. And that's that's debated. So it's it's not like there's one source where you go and say they are the defining and folks on on this, on any issues that I'm assuming you're asking about. And why you're asking the question is you're you're asking about public health and crime. But I, you know, is that, so that.
I don't see in the information gathered so far that there's been any any specific input from from groups that might have more information about different aspects.
Right, we did receive, we did receive the letter from the Coalition Connection, which is in the end of your packet. But, yeah.
And there's the handouts from the different CDC.
But I guess to answer your question, there, outside of these folks, there haven't been specific, you know, Cordero groups or Marin County groups that have, you know, submitted public comments to this to this point, but that may that may change.
Phil, you wanted to ask.
Yeah, a couple of things that, from the other questions that were asked, going just, looking at this chart, Phil, I see where San and Selmo allows outdoor cultivation, but it has additional restrictions. And then you've got the whole column, the last column lists the towns, and it's both San and Selmo and Larksburg make that list. I'm looking at those that share, we share a police department with specifically, and you talk about they have additional restrictions. Could you get us a list of what the additional restrictions are in both cases?
Both indoor and outdoor?
Well, San and Selmo for outdoor and Larks, Larksburg and San and Selmo for indoor. I just think it would be helpful if we know they have, know what the restrictions are. Someone asked a question, I think it was you, Charles, about the village and town center. Those two malls, whatever they're called this week, they do things to attract children. They both have play areas. When they came before us to upgrade and add things on, they talked about play centers and water fountains and water spouts and all that. I don't think that's a place where I would wanna see a dispensary, in the sense that if worried about it being near nursery schools and other schools, I don't think a place that where we have encouraged children, people to bring children, do family things, would be the proper place. I think we could, you know, we can find other places in Cordero which would be better.
So my only question with that is, how do you distinguish between a bar and a dispensary at this point, now that it's legal? But, you know.
The town does have distinctions for alcohol-related establishments, and that's part of our job, is to figure out, staff's job, to figure out how to apply that. Yeah, exactly. So, anything else?
Those were the two that came to mind as other questions came up.
So I did have one more that I didn't. So I became aware of, in South San Francisco, they're using the larger tilt-up warehouses for indoor growing at a commercial scale. And I didn't really see how that's addressed, you know, and if we had a larger kind of commercial space, because it's about the adjacency to San Francisco and some of these larger urban areas. They don't like to transport it from farther away. And so these people were operating without a permit, so they confiscated a hundred thousand plants inside of a warehouse. But it was only because they weren't growing it with a permit. And so I guess that's where, you know, if someone wanted to use one of these big warehouses, what what license would that fall under? And and how's that as an indoor grow and regulations?
I I listed, again, many, many different licenses, and I listed the different categories. And I believe that the indoor, you know, indoor cultivate, commercial indoor cultivation is broken up by size, and so license A is this size, license B is this size, and so on. I know Sonoma County has, there's been articles in the paper about people buying large warehouse space for indoor grows in Sonoma County. Again, that would be, I don't think I particularly listed that as a business, but that would be, you know, another option for if Cordero chose to have that type of business. It could, it could do that and restrict it however it wanted to.
So state law has licensing categories, as Phil indicated, and it's distinction between indoor, outdoors, small, medium, mixed, large, and manufacturing, and then testing, retailing, distributor, distributor and whatnot. So a lot of that's already regulated by state law and by licenses. The question here for planning commission, as well as the community and ultimately the council, is rather than getting the nuances of the licenses, is there any interest by the community to even explore whether they want large warehouse space or exterior cultivation of that of that nature? And so rather than getting the nuances, I think the questions before you tonight is, is there any interest that the commission wants to send back to the council saying, we're interested, you might wanna explore it or not at all?
Is this licensing by the state or by the town?
Yeah, maybe a way just to to conclude, that would be if if a jurisdiction decides to do, say, a medium-sized indoor cultivation, that that entity, whoever, and that was allowed in a particular jurisdiction, that property owner, business owner, we need to get the proper license through the state of California, and so we have to go through all the regulations of the state of California to have that medium-sized indoor grow. And they would also have to go through all the requirements of the town of Cordero, which we, if we allowed that, we would establish that. Use permit, location, hours of operation, all this different type of thing. So they would be dealing with two, two entities, the state of California and the town of Cordero.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, I'm gonna run through a few quick questions so these people can get up and speak their mind here. What is the current state of the conflict with the federal regulations? Is the is the town attorney or anybody worried about a problem with federal intervention at any point at this, no?
Nothing other than what you already stated is that there's a current conflict between California law and federal law. It doesn't mean that cities can't create processes for these types of uses. And that, what what the feds are gonna do remains to be seen by anybody. I mean, that would be a guess. I mean, if San Francisco's dealing with, they're they're trying to do safe injection sites to deal with their opiate and opioid and other drug issues, and the feds wanna block that. So even though that would be allowed in California. So, you know, that's gonna be, in this case, we're not proposing, or what's not before the council is any suggestion that the town actually, all it is is gonna be town regulation. It's not gonna be town-sponsored, so I think that that's gonna be up to the individual owners.
When we're talking about the zoning here, then we would be considering it either in a C three likely then as an added use to the zoning ordinance, right? Or?
We haven't gotten that far yet. I mean, certainly, if we're talking a commercial, if we're talking businesses, yeah, it would be logical that would be one of the commercial zones. But also, a testing facility could be in one of the industrial zones.
Right, okay. We wouldn't create a new zoning description for this?
Unless we thought it was necessary, but we could pull, if we wanna get into that after, we can, we can get, pull up the zoning map and talk a little bit about locations, if that's helpful.
Does anybody have any idea of the state of the medical marijuana applications versus the recreational marijuana applicants? Because the medical people have sort of fallen by the wayside, as I hear it, and that's truly hearsay, right? And that they don't seem as viable as they used to be. So, you know, medical marijuana, having been the only path for people to obtain it legally, now that's not it, right? So, medical marijuana people.
You mean for personal?
Yeah, right.
I I did talk to the the person in Katari, and there, you know, the advantage of getting a medicinal card are, obviously, if you're if you're under twenty-one, or over eighteen, you can get it. I think there are some some cost benefits if you have a medicinal card. If you, and if you use it on a prescription from a doctor or recommendation from a doctor on a very regular basis, there are some some financial benefits to having a medicinal card.
Okay.
But I'm not an expert on that.
And we don't, we could, we could look into the, how many applications there are.
I don't know, and I just wanna say to Margaret's question about this is that, you know, that we're venturing into a territory here, it seems to me, that doesn't have any standards. We don't have Caltrans standards, we don't have architectural standards, we don't have anything out there. So this is a Wild West of of regulation out there in a lot of ways. The information is not conclusive that, you know, you don't have, like, a turning radius, you don't, you can't do a certain thing, right? So you design all your roads and everything in a certain way and with a certain clearance and all that. This this does not have the statistical information that is hard-driven, there's no authority to hand it down to us from the federal or state level to say, this is what it is with certainty.
Yeah, I think I think there's different categories you can look at. I mean, some of the regulations in terms of, you know, there there's sort of quality of life issues that sort of each community tends to adopt, maybe similar, but very unique at the same time, regulations dealing with sort of quality of life issues such as nuisance-related issues, needed buffers, things like that. So that's one bucket of things that I think are left out. I wouldn't call it the Wild West, but you may wanna attach it to other similar types of nuisance-related issues.
Certainly.
Such as, you know, and and think about zones in that way, whether it's odors or, you know, things. There I would, I would bring up Charles's comparison to alcohol sales or something like that, related to schools, schools or something, you know, proximity. So there are some, yes, I I mean, I agree, there's no, nobody's saying this is the model ordinance that is going to be the best for a town the size of Cordero. But, you know, obviously, people are trying to come up with what works for them, and we have, we we can learn from some other jurisdictions, I think, in that regard, obviously. But I think, you know, we, it's, you know, I think there's, over time, we'll, you'll you'll sort of see, and can revisit regulations, and over time, they may ultimately be some lessons learned from different places about what might be the the best standard out there for retail sales and and things like that, you know. So I, I don't, I wouldn't worry, you know, Wild West sounds pretty daunting in some respects.
I'll get back to that later, I will, but with that said, I think it's time for these patient folks to have their opportunity to tell us what they wanna say. So with that said, we would open it up to public comment. The microphone is up there, if you would state your name. I'm gonna give you three minutes to make your case, and then we'll move on from there. So there are five, six, seven, probably eight people here that wanna speak, at the most, seven. And so, you know, let's keep it rolling here for all of that, please, and we will look forward to hearing what you all have to say. So somebody start the ball rolling here, please.
My name is Karen Gribosi, I live at one eleven Parkview Circle, I'm a Cordero resident. The first thing that I wanna say, Phil, is that there were two people at the Saturday thing that weren't Cordero residents. One was from Larksburg, and one was a lady that came down from Santa Rosa. I could even give you their names, but.
Thank you.
I just watched it this afternoon, so.
Great, thank you.
Fresh in my memory. I've spoken about this from the time that we were speaking about medicinal marijuana, and one of the things that I reiterate every time I come before you, or whomever I come before, is that it's not our job to make sure that people in Cordero have someplace to buy weed. So the lady that I listened to this afternoon that spoke on Saturday in September said, for instance, she's a Kaiser patient, and she goes to the Kaiser Pharmacy up in Nevada or wherever it is. So it's not Cordero's job to make sure there's a Kaiser Pharmacy in Cordero. It's it's there, the same way with weed. And besides that, and I know I'm lumping it all in together, besides that, there is delivery. I had a question about the manufacturing, if that had the sixty-foot criteria, six hundred feet restriction that the state has, or if it was just on dispensaries? Or, and I read someplace else that there was something with a thousand-foot regulation, so I don't know if there's two different ones or if I'm confused. I had a question about if Cordero allows the California default to go into effect, the six hundred feet, and then the state of California changes their default to, say, four hundred feet, will we then be at four hundred feet even though we would prefer six hundred feet? I know I now have forty-eight seconds. One of the things that I heard when I watched the Saturday thing this afternoon was that there's a lot of thought that because there is, one of the things that people said is, well, you can buy anything at Redwood High. So there's a little bit of like, well, we should just abdicate and surrender because there's bad behavior that can prevail. I don't think that should be, that's a pretty friggin' low bar. So I think we should have a higher bar, we should have a higher standard, and that's not, we shouldn't capitulate our moral high ground insofar as that we have one. So I'm now out of time.
Thank you, Karen.
If you'd like, Jim and Chase, I can try to answer both those questions?
We will at the end, yes, thank you, yeah.
So I'm I'm not aware of the the six hundred feet, I'm not sure where that number came up.
I read that somewhere as well, six hundred and a thousand, yes.
Okay, so the two, the two numbers, the two numbers I have are, one cannot smoke cannabis within a thousand feet of a school, daycare, or youth center. And then a hundred feet is the distance in one, once once property has to be from what I believe is outdoor grow. So in terms of, if we were to decide, if the town was to allow certain businesses, again, we can set the zones, and we can say, you have to be in zone C, whatever, and that piece of property has to be X distance from school, whatever they wanna be. But I don't, I don't think the state says businesses have to be a certain distance from a school, but I can.
I think they do, they say six hundred.
We'll defer to the person in front of the microphone, and you are.
Thank you. You know what, I just wanted to, I'm Linda Hen, I do not live in Cordero, I did for nine years, but I live in Kentfield, and I shop, work, and work out and eat and do a lot of business in Cordero.
So I have a very high interest in what happens in Cordero. And I I know this is a very complex topic, as you all, as we're discussing tonight, and getting the opinion of community members is a good idea, but it's not, it's not enough to get the opinion of, you know, three hundred people when you have nine thousand people living in your town. You'll hear more about that later. And it's not as simple as just opening any retail store.
And it's not as simple as just opening any retail store, there's a cost to the community, and this has been evidenced in Colorado and Washington, so I urge you to look at closer reports, there's a lot of data out on that, and it's the cost with crime, the increases to staff, the increase in youth use, increased traffic fatalities due to cannabis, the increase in energy use for indoor growth, black market growth due to permissive regulatory system with the use of pesticides that will contaminate soil, water, and wildlife. And this has all been proven. The intended tax revenues are rarely seen due to the staffing costs to police and regulate. As you move forward, your, your task will be to put policy in place to protect your community, and do what's right for Cordero Madera. And I urge you to continue to seek input, research, and data, and especially from other communities. Because the United States has chosen to let states, or they didn't choose, but because we're doing this on a state-by-state and a town-by-town basis, it's kind of ludicrous, and I kind of agree with you that it's the Wild West. Canada's choosing to reg, to legalize it as a country, and it is a lot easier. The fact that we're, we have something federally illegal, and then we're expecting every state, and then down to each town, I mean, it's, I think it's crazy that Cordero Madera is having to wrestle with this, and the amount of time and energy you have to put into this, as well as Larkspur, San and Selmo, Fairfax. Because the, the cost to the, in public health impact is huge, and like someone said, once the genie's out of the bottle, you don't get it back in. So, don't rush this process, this is a large burden for a small town, and you have a, a great town here, with a lot at risk. Local government staff time and enforcement, like I said, is costly. Having something illegal federally while allowing you, is, like I said, is burdensome. This topic is complex, and the impact is monumental, it's not small. There is no responsible retailing for cannabis industry, there's no standards in place, like there is for alcohol. There's no standardized DUI test, and it's difficult to administer a blood test, and it's expensive. So, we don't, and, you know, the, the impact to youth is huge, you know, our youth use is fifty percent higher than the national average, if not more by now. They already don't think it's harmful, they see it, oh, shoot, anyway...
Finish up, go ahead, yeah.
I just, I just urge you to address the environmental, the public health, and the impact to Cordero Madera, and really look long and hard at this, all the facts. Thanks.
Thank you, Lena.
Hi, I'm Brian Igersheim, I live on Birch Avenue. I've lived in Cordero Madera for four years, previously, I was in Hawaii for a dozen years, and, so, yeah, this is a big topic. I, I find that argument to be super antiquated, and something that is relevant maybe fifteen years ago. At this point, from what I gather, from my research, the majority of the people in this town voted for this state law. And this state law seemed to me, from what I saw, was to tax and regulate. And so, while those arguments might all be valid, and might all be true, the reality is that at Redwood, you probably can get whatever you want. So, why would you not tax and regulate it, and let all those different bureaus and departments maintain some level of control over? From my understanding of traveling this world, from Switzerland, to Holland, to places in India, where it's accessible in a legal and controlled manner, is where actually the community is safer. So, we can look at our own community during prohibition. It is a dangerous place to have an unregulated sector of our economy. So, yeah, I understand why the town would have an ordinance in place at the moment to allow deliveries to come in, but I, I hear a lot about tax and regulate, and so part of that is to generate funds that should be generated. We're talking about business that's happening in our town, might as well tax that, and might as well regulate it, and let those that are in charge of regulating it, regulate it. And so, I think that there should be a business for cannabis, just like there is for alcohol or tobacco, with similar restrictions, however that should be deemed in this town. But that's my opinion on it, and I'm just sharing it, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jasmine Garrity. I'm a former resident of Cordero Madera, but I actually don't live here anymore, but I work here, I spend a lot of time here. So, I kind of am here to represent the youth in the community, because they don't get to vote, and they didn't have a say when these laws got passed, so someone's got to stick up for those guys. So, as far as like, current data and regulations, so Redwood High School, right here, it says on this sheet that was left up at the front, it says that fifty, fifteen percent of youth reported using cannabis in the last thirty days. So, at Redwood High School, thirty-five percent of eleventh graders have used cannabis in the past thirty days. That's over a third of eleventh graders, so that's a lot. As far as Marin goes, for eleventh graders, it's at thirty percent, and in California, it's twenty-point-one percent of eleventh graders. So, our rates are already higher than California State, and Marin County. Here in Cordero Madera, all the kids going to Redwood High School. So, I think that's really important to take into consideration when looking at these laws and regulations. For local jurisdictions, we have a lot of authority over what goes on in our town. We can do a lot of regulations here locally, some of which can be looking at advertising regulations, making sure that normalization doesn't occur, I mean, it's already here, we should make sure it's not advertised. We should also make sure that we add, look at buffer zones really carefully, especially the six-hundred-foot limit, that shouldn't be decreased, probably. And we should also look at potentially adding buffer zones to alcohol establishments, because as research indicates, those two things don't go hand-in-hand, alcohol and cannabis use at the same time is really dangerous. As far as labeling, medical and non-medical products should be labeled differently. I know that after going into a medical and recreational establishment, that I don't want medicine to be called OG Kush, and sour watermelon diesel, or whatever the flavors are. That's insane, they shouldn't be labeled the same thing, so that's something that we can regulate locally. We also have the ability to regulate potency levels. As far as addiction goes, for adults, one in ten adults who are current habitual users have a substance use disorder, and one in six adolescents who use, habitually have a substance use disorder. So, to decrease the substance use disorder and cannabis use disorder, we can actually regulate the amount of THC potency in the products at a local level, so we have that ability. We also have the ability to focus on delivery, we can...
Can we, let's change, we're going to change your, your battery in the mic and pause that timer.
Okay. I was like, I sound like an alien. I've got so many things to say, so I get more time now, right?
The timer has been stopped, right?
Okay.
While he's doing that, Jasmine, I'm going to ask you, when you're referring to the percentages of youth, and you say you want to, they don't have a voice, I'm, I want to ask you, what is it that you want to say for that percentage of youth?
Well, what I want to...
Wait a second for the microphone to come back to you, so, because that didn't come, yeah, that didn't come through in your description of things, and while I hear you advocating for many things, I wasn't sure what that number you wanted to be an advocate for, so...
Did it battery?
Maybe, if you want to use this one right here.
Okay, I can talk loud, too, but...
No, because we're recording, and if you go right there, the camera will get you, and the mic will get you.
Okay, cool. Yeah, so, as far as that, that thirty-five percent of youth, a lot of them are struggling. There's been, like, in Marin County, we have, for marijuana use, in our, in our, what is it, in our recovery facilities for adolescents, we have the, we have the highest rates of youth going in for marijuana use. And so, that's definitely a concern in our community, and I know that at the next meeting, I'll have some kids with me to talk, but...
I understand that, okay, thank you.
And then, um...
Very quickly, yes.
Yeah, so a couple, just as lo, those restrictions that I all talked about, and then the labeling, and same thing with state laws, they're still, they're still changing. So, rushing into things is kind of something that we need to be really concerned about, and making sure that we have the proper regulations in place before we take on something that is out of our reach.
Thank you, Jasmine.
Yeah.
You put your tongue on the battery, Phil, and make it work. Hi.
Hi, good evening, my name is Jeremiah Mock, and I'm the co-author of the letter that you received at the back of your packet. I'm a faculty member at University of California, San Francisco, and I have twenty-three years of experience in tobacco prevention research. I am a Cordero Madera resident, I live just down here by Town Park, and I have two sons who are, one in elementary and one in middle school. I'm coming to tell you on behalf of my sons, we moved here to Cordero Madera because I did a lot of research, and found that Cordero Madera is an extremely safe community, and we moved from Japan, which is a very safe community, and we wanted to ensure that our kids would have the opportunity to grow up in an environment that was healthful and safe for them. Just since moving in Cordero Madera less than two years ago, we are now finding people smoking weed in Cordero Madera in Town Park, and the message that my sons asked me to send to you is that they don't want to grow up in a community where people are smoking weed everywhere. And the reason that's important is because the decisions that you're making now are going to impact the coming generations of people. I'm not personally against people using marijuana, but the data are very clear about the health effects, long-term lasting health effects, there's a study that was just published a few days ago, that says, that demonstrates very clearly that the long-term impact of cannabis use permanently on young people is more significant than alcohol use. I would urge you to consider establishing what you could call a Blue Ribbon Commission of people who have expertise, including people who work in public safety, and in public health, and the fields of medicine, and youth counseling, and psychology, to advise you on the state of the knowledge that's out there. The second point that I would make to you is that I commend you for making some preliminary efforts to try to gauge where this community is, in terms of the opinions about, about establishing these businesses. It's not a business decision, it's a public health decision. Currently, there's a tremendous amount of disinformation, and misinformation, and lack of information among many parents that I know about what we're talking about when we say cannabis. They have no idea about concentrates, the potency, the ways, the new ways that people are vaping, this is all very new territory out there. So, I'd urge you to consider conducting an inexpensive, scientifically accurate survey, and I can be happy to advise you about how to do that in a low-cost way. It would cost the, the town a few thousand dollars to gauge what people say, and before doing that, to be, to ensure that you have public fora, where people are widely aware of this issue, and can come together and hear credible information about what the impact potentially will be for this community. And I'd be more than happy to advise you and assist you in doing that kind of work, because people need to know the facts before we ask them their opinion. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeremiah, appreciate that.
My name's Don Carney, I live in Fairfax, but I work with a lot of the children who come out of this community. I run the Marin County Youth Court, been running the youth court for about fifteen years, kept eleven hundred kids out of the juvenile justice system, and the predominance of cases we see are for marijuana. And I'm very concerned about the normalization of marijuana. I'd hate to see a storefront in any town in Marin County, it would just make it more normalized. And the more normalized we make it, the more it impacts the kids. I'll give you a concrete example. Since marijuana has become legal, I have had a real boost in middle-school kids marketing to each other with edibles. When I interview the kids about this, and they're baking them up right at home, Rice Piss, Rice Krispy edibles, and they very bluntly tell me, "This is our drug, and we're not going to let the adults make all the money off it. It's legal now, people on Wall Street are getting wealthy on it, Canadians are going to get wealthy on it, I need to get my piece of the pie." This is an eighth grader. This is what normalization does to young people. They perceive it as adults using it, young people are using alcohol every day, you have to be twenty-one to get alcohol, but they somehow get their hands on it. We're not going to be able to keep it out of kids' hands. It's not going to dry up the black market, it's going to drive the black market. Right now, in the state of California, we're producing more marijuana than we can use. About sixty percent of the marijuana made in the state now is leaving the state. That leaves us open to a federal charge on moving marijuana out of the state. This thing is a nightmare. I really want you to think long and hard and soberly before you permit a storefront. I don't want little kids, like Jeremiah's kids, saying, "Hey, how come all those people are waiting in line outside that store? What's going on in that store? I'm curious about that." Kids are curious, that's what makes them intelligent. I think we ought to give them healthier things to be curious about. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Don. Who else? Anyone else going to stand up and speak tonight? All right, seeing none, then we'll, Karen, we can talk to you anytime, I'm just kidding. You're going to, okay.
My name's Andrew Middleditch, I live over on Meadow Ridge, and I'm a psychiatrist, and I have two small children, and I, I spoke at one of the workshops earlier, and so I'm not, I won't belabor going over the, the same points that I, I made earlier, but I just, I really appreciate some of the comments that some of my neighbors made, and about the public health concerns around this, and, you know, just thinking about this, the delivery of mari, of marijuana is not something that I understand that the town can regulate, so in terms of access to medicinal marijuana, it, it seems that there, there's not really any issue in terms of people being able to access medicine. And so, I, I sort of struggle to see any sort of advantage to the town, or to the community from a, from a public health point of view, other than for the business interests of the cannabis industry to have a storefront. And so, that just, it just really strikes me that, that there's not a, what, what advantage are, are we getting in having a storefront beyond, as a, as a community? And so, that's, that's just the one thing that I, I just, I can't see what value it would, it would bring to us, and, and I definitely have concerns about the, the normalization in terms of how that's going to affect children in the community, and, you know, and as a psychiatrist, seeing people with addiction issues, psychosis issues, cognitive issues, attention issues, I mean, you know, there, there are real hazards from marijuana, and so I just, I would hope that our town would take that reality in, in consideration. But I'll, I'll pause there.
Thank you very much. Okay. Phyllis?
Yeah. I'm very glad that this, we had speakers who talked about some of the dangers of marijuana for youth. I think it's important, I, I really do see a separation between the medical use with the physician's prescription, and recreational use. I was talking to one of my sons lately, who lives in the East Bay, and he does coaching of, on the side of high school baseball teams, and told him what was coming up, and Ryan and I had this discussion, he says, "You know, Mom, those students," he's caught a couple, "who had been smoking..." know, Mom, those students," he's caught a couple who had been smoking, he says, "They're not going to go to the stores, because they can get it cheaper on the street. When it's sold in an establishment, there's all the overhead added on. So, it's not going, those who believe by selling it legally, the youth who are now buying it illegally are going to stop. It's not going to happen." Don is nodding his head as I speak. And I think it's important to remember, I think it is very important, I have said this going all the way back a couple of years ago when it came up about closing that other establishment, and I even spoke before the council as an individual. We must separate the use of medical marijuana from recreational marijuana. And if we're going to allow a storefront, and a storefront is not, doesn't have to be your neighborhood grocery store, the successful operation that we had here in Corder Madera was actually in an office building, I think it was on the second floor, or something where there were people checked at the door and things that went on. So, we have to think, if there's going to be retail sales, are they going to be restricted to medicinal marijuana? If there is going to be growing, and, you know, Phil, you kept on talking about whether or not you can see things if it's outside. I was looking at the picture you showed on that slide that showed the indoor. Well, there are the six plants lined up in the window of somebody's place.
Actually, there were eight plants.
Eight, okay. I didn't bother counting. I just saw, I mean, if somebody, if, if the sun is coming, you know, I don't know if it's north, south, or east, west, that you need, you know, if you need the morning sun or the afternoon sun or whatever, if that's where the window is, and they're sitting in the window and everybody can see it, what is the difference if it's inside or outside? I mean, you've got to look at a whole picture. It's very interesting, you know, to see things on paper, but you've got to look at the reality of it. And I think it's important, if we're going to send some information forward to what our feelings are after this hearing and what we've learned in our discussion, that we should look at not just, well, the state says A, B, C, and D, and see if it fits our community. This is where we live, and this is where our kids are, and this is where, you know, businesses exist and all sorts of things exist, and we want it to be a healthy community and a safe community. That's what I think for most of the people here.
Thank you, Phyllis. Before I do the usual round robin of commissioners, I feel that this is a significant enough issue that I want to throw out some facts and some information that I've come across in my research that goes beyond what your letter put forth. And there is a tremendous amount of governmental information available about the status of marijuana and how it's impacting youth and communities. So, the reason I'm saying this is because I think personally, and I'm saying this to all of you, I hope you hear it, that avoiding, finding a way to not normalize this, I think, is my personal viewpoint of it. So, here I am, looking at the National Institute of Health and their Institute of Drug Abuse, and I'm going to rattle off some facts here. It says more than half of new illicit drug users began with marijuana. And I believe that's true. You know, here they're reporting this, "Most people use drugs for the first time when they are teenagers." I believe that's true. When you're a 25-something, you don't start using marijuana usually and then go into cocaine and other drugs. That's the usual thing. I think that we have a problem with alcohol. That's clear. We've heard the statistics on Marin County alcohol and Marin County marijuana. So, the abuse of alcohol in Marin County is higher here than it is, I believe somebody said, almost anywhere in the state of California. So, the fact that alcohol is so accepted here in Marin County, and we can't regulate it well enough, and it is a brain drug, it's not good for you if it's abused. So, you know, here we are, talking about another element that does not have the years of documentation and study that alcohol has behind it, and trying to normalize it. You know, and I'm going to rattle off some other things for everybody's use here. It says in this report that after alcohol, marijuana has the highest rate of dependence or abuse among all drugs. Think about that. So, after alcohol, and this is in front of opioids and so forth. So, here we are, talking about trying to allow something in here that we want to regulate. I think that's a very difficult task to undertake and let it into the community. I will also say that I have been associated with, as just random friendships and so forth, with people doing marijuana startups that wanted to do it for the CBD effect on their friends for cancer relief and so forth. And I applaud that, but as it turns out, in witnessing at least two of these startups, they couldn't assure what the CBD did for these people. And a lot of them have taken the CBD and said, "Nothing's happening to me. I'm not feeling any relief." And yet, these are promoted as drugs for that purpose. The studies are not there. The evidence is not there. And then, the recreational stuff that people have started is just, it's out of control. So, recently, after traveling to the home of California marijuana in Garberville and talking to the people up there, they no longer can make a living off of marijuana up there. It's in the hands of larger people. So, the idea that it's a good home remedy or it's somehow governed by local people is not the case. So, I also knew some months ago that one of our larger conglomerates was headed into the drink business, and sure enough, about three weeks ago, Coca-Cola announced that they were starting their project to take, you know, go into the marijuana beverage business. So, it's no longer going to be just Garberville people doing this. It's going to be conglomerates pushing it. Why? Because there's money for them. The money isn't going to benefit us. It's not going to take care of this community. And I don't see, like, we have to cater to the segrums of marijuana, right? So, why let big money in and let it out of control? This is just nuts. So, when looking at the studies that have been done by the government, there are so few because they can't grow marijuana legally to actually study it. So, since 1971 or something, there's only been 13 non-governmental-funded studies into marijuana effects. It's just nuts that this is something that is running headlong into regu, being allowed into communities. So, I'm perfectly willing to distribute to the other commissioners this plethora of information from the National Institute of Health and so forth, where they're, they're saying so explicitly that there are problems with it, and even though I see benefits out of people that find the right gummy bear to relieve their pain, you know, it's, it's hit or miss. And they're doing okay. They're going to die in the next year, but they have nothing to go to. It's not like they can take an aspirin, they can take an Advil, or they can get a chemotherapy. This is just silly to call it even medicinal because the research hasn't been done to make it safe for everybody. So, it's, we, I, I am, you know, there is conclusive or substantial evidence, and this is by the National Academy of Science, that cannabis or cannabinoids are effective for treatment of chronic pain. There is some multiple cirrhosis pescii symptoms that it relieves, but there is, they don't know enough about the why, the wherefore, and the how and all that stuff, right? It's not like a drug company that gets their drug approved by the FDA. They're starting it. I think there are two studies now that are underway. They're, they're working on it, but there's a long ways to go before this ends up being a valid form of treatment. It goes on to say that, you know, there are respiratory issues, there are no cancer solutions with cannabis. But, here's the thing, whether it's adults or kids, there is substantial evidence of statistical association between cannabis use and the development of schizophrenia and other psychoses, with the highest risk among the most frequent users. What did we just say about Marin County? There is substantial evidence that the stimulant treatment of ADHD during adolescence is not a risk factor for the development of problem cannabis use, but there is substantial evidence that increase in cannabis use frequency and the progression to developing problem cannabis use, and that there are personality disorders that follow with that. So, and finally, I'm just going to get off my box here and say that, you know, as a child of the 60s and 70s, there was a fair amount of illicit drug use going on in my world, and, you know, it impacted my life and a lot of other lives. I would say that out of 20 people I know or knew in high school, 10 are dead, and they're not dead because they fell off a cliff. They're dead because of problems associated with drug use and other things. So, and that was from a community not unlike Corder Madera, a well-to-do community. So, you know, it's just, it's amazing that we're in this position to have to consider something. And I'm saying to the other commissioners and to staff that I would look at trying to limit this to the minimum that the state allows, which is delivery and the cultivation, right? And keep it at that. That would be my position, and let it stay that way, because we don't need to be, as this gentleman said, the one place, you know, where you can get it down the street. Let's put it, people who want it here, they drive to San Francisco, they drive to Cattati all the time to get it, and it's not a problem. You know, we don't need to have it sold here for any purpose. That's my feeling, and I'm putting it out there.
When you say cultivation, you mean personal or commercial?
Personal cultivation. Commercial, not, should not hurt.
Okay, I just want to be sure. Okay, I agree with you on that.
So, it's just to...
Just on, just one point of clarification. On delivery, the state doesn't say you have to allow delivery at this point. I think they are working on... No, that's not true. I think they are, I think there is something that is being worked on legislatively that will say it can't, it has to be able to allow to drive through. There might have been, maybe it wasn't a tax to let, some, some recent reform, or one of the governor bills that was passed.
We're allowing delivery from...
We are currently allowing it from non-delivery. And I think that's, will be the, the minimum threshold. I just don't know if that has been actually passed by the legislature yet or not.
There's nothing that requires any community that the delivery service be located within, it's just from external, and it's currently, and again, we'll, you know, we're constantly trying to stay current on the changes to these legislation. And just for clarification, when you talk about cultivation, are you talking about personal indoor or...
Personal indoor, you know, I, growing six plants for your personal use seems tolerant, but it, we would have to say it shouldn't be seen, witnessed, or, you know, it used to be the guys with the tinfoil in the windows were growing marijuana in their house, right? So, at least use blackout curtains, for God's sake. There should be no evidence that you're growing marijuana at home.
Yeah, I'd like to add one thing to what you said about...
Well, just to refocus, I think this is, you know, I'd like, you're putting this out there for the other commissioners, I would assume, because I think ideally, and hopefully, we can hear from, you know, discussion amongst the commissioners about, is there a consensus, or can you get to consensus that can be passed along to the council?
Yes, exactly.
It was what they were, when you talked about the use of marijuana for cancer, there is one use you didn't touch upon, which I have seen, which is successful, and that's for people who are on chemotherapy. It helps them with the nausea, and that would not be somebody trying to save their lives or the pain from cancer. And I think that should be acknowledged. That's, and that would be a short-term use in relief.
And I did say that it is that. I have seen it. I know that it occurs for that nausea, but it's hit or miss between the patient, and they don't know whether gummy B, A, D, or C, or the candy bar is going to do it. And they often have effects, side effects that they didn't anticipate from that particular brand, even though they might be looking at two brands that say the same thing on the package, they don't know what they're going to do.
Well, I think it would be up to the doctor, who gives them the prescription, to guide them. I'm not going to try to, I don't, you're left, you're the doctor. I don't know.
Right, anyway.
I never smoked, it carried into my lungs. I don't know.
Margaret, and to you, I throw the ball to you.
Okay. Most of you know, I spend my day trying to make sure kids' lives are normal. That's what I do. And the word normalization really is a very strong word, and I don't think that having storefronts, having it at the mall, having people light up in Town Park or vape or whatever it is, is a normal kind of life for our children to see. I don't, I think that if somebody wants to find marijuana, they can, but I don't think that we should just make it easily out there like a five-and-dime kind of store thing. I just don't think it's appropriate for our town, and I wouldn't, my children are grown now, but I wouldn't have wanted them to be exposed to that on their walk home from school, or when they went with their friends to the movie theater, or any other activity. I don't know what the, the state default is, the rules are, but I think that in, in our size town, and the fact that we have plenty of revenue coming in from other sources, for this size town, we don't need the revenue from that kind of business. And I think it's appropriate for our town. That's just the way I feel about it.
All right, I may come back to and ask you if there's something that you would allow, but I, I think you're saying...
I pretty much agree with what you laid out. I did like the idea of a blue ribbon committee to, to at least put together some learned ideas to present to the town council in a coherent sort of maybe listed way so that they could be a little more informed. I would have liked to be more informed on the, I appreciate the health issues that you brought up, and the, the children's cognitive development kinds of issues and human issues, but I think that there are traffic, you know, police, safety, health, all those kind of issues, which we really need more just sort of focused information about.
Well, if I may pick up on that, is that, that's sort of an educational component, and that there hasn't been enough verifiable education to the community or to the kids or to us. And it would be great then if there was a body of evidence that said, "This is what we know. This is what's been happening." And you can look at that to make up your mind rather than making, getting conclusions from, you know, voting flyers and different groups that may come forth. So, I agree with that. Charles?
I just want to, just suggest that Jasmine be on that committee.
I would agree. Right, she's very well spoken, yes. Charles?
Well, so, if I can share my own personal feelings now that I've just asked general questions, though, just clarification. I personally would not want this around my three children, and it's not something that I would condone even in their adulthood. I think it's, it's affected my own life very personally, and I definitely believe those statistics because I've experienced a lot of it, and I think normalization is a scary thing with this. So, I, yeah, so, the minimums is okay for me. I'd like to keep the community and, you know, I mean, I guess I asked the question about alcohol because I also think that, I wish we could regulate that more as well, you know, and, you know, so it's, you know, because I spent this week in... you know, and, you know, so it's, you know, 'cause I spent this weekend sweeping glass bottles off the blacktop at my elementary school, so, I guess, I, I will go to the minimums, if, if given the chance, just because I don't wanna be responsible for it. I think it's a...
Good, I, I hear that in, that personal experience in your voice, yes, so...
Yeah, just, just wanna real clarify, when, when we talk about the minimum, just wanna be sure I'm clear on, in that is, if you wanna talk the minimal amount of cannabis use in businesses in the town of Corder Madara, one could achieve that through prohibiting outdoor cultivation, dramatic, or restricting indoor cultivation through various fees, permits, so on and so forth, and, so those are, those are, those are the gray areas, if you really wanna, just wanna make sure I'm understanding minimum.
Well, so, to me, it's...
What about the person?
Right.
Yeah, I, I think we're agreed on that part, but when you say minimum, should we ratchet down?
So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I, I, so the thing for me is, I think the decriminalization of it was very important, because I think there's a stigma to it, and I think that people should be allowed a free, personal freedom to do many things with their lives, even self-destruct, right? But as a community, and as a community representative, I don't wanna encourage that in the community. And so, I guess, you know, personal grow inside the house, we can't restrict, right? And then, delivery, I think also, it should be allowed. Access is important, and I think especially medicinal, if they're unable to, to exit, you know? And I have my own personal things about people that I've seen try to use it for medicinal. I definitely believe that regulated drugs from pharmaceutical companies distributed by doctors through pharmacies are much better for health issues. Unfortunately, like, when it comes to chemotherapy, which I personally have gone through, the nausea drugs are very good, but they're very expensive, and if you don't have the right healthcare, you know, these accessible kind of things are more important, so I'm not gonna fight to take that away from people, so...
It makes me wanna ask Dr. Bundy here, 'cause he hasn't spoken yet, but the, one of the documents that I read said that there is a difference between the cannabis that they're cultivating for federal studies, and that's probably not where you know about it, but maybe in the realm of what is considered true medicinal marijuana, right? 'Cause cultivating it in February, and making CBD over in Emeryville is not the same as pharmaceutical CBD, right? So, if there was a drug created, or can there be a drug created that could be licensed as medical marijuana, you know, in the future here, is that coming down the pike? You know, that would be that grade of tested, regulated dosage available, all that kind of thing, for real medical marijuana, CBD.
Throwing a lot out there. The medical-grade marijuana that the feds provided was grown on a plot in Mississippi. The studies with it were pretty limited, just because there, there was a reluctance on the part of physicians to really even be labeled marijuana doctors, from the standpoint of investigating. I've long advocate, I've never advocated the use of marijuana. I have advocated the legalization of marijuana, because I think there are more problems with, with prohibition, as we discovered in, with our own experience with prohibition. Legalizing marijuana should open up the ability to really study some of these things in medical issues. They're trying to, you know, as you know, use CBD as an anti-inflammatory, anti-epileptic drug, and the studies are promising on some of those. You know, it'll take a number of years to tell if there are really any benefit from that. My own thought in regard to normalization, as a physician running a chronic pain program, was seeing patients come in, and I would ask them, you know, what are you taking six Percocet a day for? And they would tell me, it makes me feel normal. And so, that was, that was the scariest thing that I would hear when I would have a patient like that. And I, I really have felt that medical marijuana was normalizing marijuana from the standpoint that kids, and others, but kids in particular, you know, would see these, this as medicine, and that you're depriving them of medicine that makes them feel better, helps them sleep, curbs their anxiety, or such like that. So, I, I never really liked the idea of medical marijuana that was available by a prescription from your physician, and we discovered that ninety percent of the physicians, of the prescriptions were written by two or three physicians that were running, you know, a script-writing service. And I think most of you that have seen this probably suspected, as I do, that ninety to ninety-five percent of the patients with the medical marijuana card just wanted to get legal marijuana, wanted to be legal, not run the risk of being criminalized. And, you know, there was a small percentage that may have benefited from the neuropathic benefits of medical marijuana, which is what it's supposed to be helpful for, but that it really hasn't been studied that well. So, the, the, where I come down, just on the, the whole scheme, and what I would support is, I'm not really opposed to a storefront recreational or non-medical marijuana, given the proper conditional use and such, and the, the ability to tax and regulate that, with some of the tax money going to organizations like the Coalition Connection, and others for the treatment of problem marijuana use, just like tobacco taxes should be used to try to reduce the incidence of tobacco use, and alcohol taxes should be used to help problem drinkers and problems with alcohol use. So, that's, that's sort of my thought, but I seem to be one of five on the council from that standpoint.
Well, I, I understand you have a plethora of experience in administering and watching pain be diverted by different methods, so I am somewhat surprised that you would say that recreational use would be acceptable, you know, given the outcome of recreational use in so many cases. But, and why is it that you would take on, or let, feel that the recreational outlet would be okay?
Really, I, I wanna see it taxed and, and regulated. Nobody under twenty-one gets it, although there are a lot of studies that say adults under the age of twenty-five shouldn't really be using marijuana because of the developing brain. So, I would like to get that information out to discourage the use of it. I wanna discourage the use of it in, in kids, and, you know, I'd like to discourage the excessive use of it in others. But of all our dr, you know, the big drugs that we've got, alcohol, tobacco, opioids, you know, marijuana is the least harmful from the standpoint of medical issues and death, even though it does have some of these deleterious effects, such as psychological factors, and a lot of problems with use in kids. You know, kids really shouldn't be using it, they shouldn't be using alcohol, they shouldn't be using tobacco. And we do have rules on that, but as we've discovered, they, there are ways that they get their hands on it. But again, from the standpoint of my looking at recreational or non-medical, is that these, this is a drug that does have deleterious side effects, it's harmful in, in children in particular, and if adults use it irresponsibly and drive, or do stupid things, bad things can happen.
Right. So, what about, I throw this to the members of the commission, what if with the delivery of some form of medical marijuana, if it's brought into the town by a delivery service, the town has to license that delivery service? Will the town, no?
Not if it's brought in from outside, it's, it's where the physical location of that delivery business is.
We'd have to have a local delivery service.
Can't put a, some sort of like tax on in-town deliveries, 'cause it's sold on...
Only if it's, so, only if it's actually located, the business is located in Corder Madara, then it would be able to have a business license and a tax.
So, deliveries would have no financial benefit to the town in any...
Unless they're located in Corder Madara, the physical business.
So, that would mean there would have to be a distribution warehouse for such in Corder Madara, in order to get any tax benefit out of it?
Right, some other, well, some, one of the other seventeen types of, like, you know, there's several other licenses. It could be distribution, it could be any of the other businesses that, that are allowed by the state.
Right.
Testing labs, warehousing, you know, distribute, I mean, there, there are many others, and we could go down a list if we have an infirm list, but...
Well, from my perspective, it would be a waste of real estate, but, you know, I would look to the other commissioners here to see if they felt that any type of locally based delivery service for just medical marijuana would be unacceptable. Not an outlet store, just a delivery hub, somebody can do it on the internet and let it be delivered within town from a facility.
I, I have a friend whose mother used miracle marijuana because her arthritis was so impacted she couldn't function, and it was delivered by, I think, from Fairfax. And I thought, oh, that's fine, you know? Why does it have to be delivered from Corder Madara? I don't see that much benefit from doing that.
Charles?
Yeah, you could spin even more into say, we're benefiting the rest of the communities by allowing them to have bountiful business come out, away from Corder Madara, out into the community, right? Like, fine. But I, I just, I, I personally don't see what, like, if we're gonna, I, I have, I see in the stats, the stats, a real interest in medicinal, because of, you know, the implications that there are people that it could help, it's low cost compared to a lot of other medicines and that kind of thing. But I guess, anything not involved with that, and, and the delivery service inside, because to me, that's just another, like, I don't know why we would want it, like, I feel like the community kinda wants to take a stance. I don't really hear, oh, this is just a regulatory discussion about zoning, it's all personal, it's all very much about the impacts, and less about the regulation, and so, the stats say, you know, if it's fifty-fifty, I really feel like I've heard a lot more vocal against it, so, you know, irrespective of my own personal, I tend, I think it's gonna go to the fifty percent that says no on all the, you know, just standard sales, and, you know, I think medicinal, I think you, you wanna allow people to have it, but I, I don't think internally, as a town, we even need to do that, especially because there are towns that are nearby, you know, it's not like we're talking about having a dry county, even though, you know, I mean, it, to me, that, that's the real discussion, is like, I think of the South, and how they dealt with alcohol, you know, and it's, it, dry counties...
Utah.
But, or Utah, but at the same time, I also find that there, I didn't really find that, that's why I, personally, I still ask questions and get, 'cause I, I struggle with it, 'cause dry counties aren't really dry, it just means farther to drive for the people that really want it, right? And that's true with anything, is like, so what, it's in Fairfax, that it's still gonna disseminate, right? So, we can take our stance as a community, right? But ultimately, I still don't see it as having a huge impact in, in what it's gonna mean, but like I said, that's a, that's a personal thing, it's a, it's a parenting, and it's a community support thing, and it's not, it's not something that just by zoning and regulation we're gonna solve, and I think that that was what was hard as a planning commissioner, is ultimately, I've been asked to look at something so much deeper than zoning, but...
Somebody has brought up the point, a member of the audience, about European communities being different, or, you know, and I just wanted to say that I, having been in so many foreign countries, I think that it is different over there. They don't have the same makeup as Americans do, for whatever reason, we're more susceptible to substance than many European countries. It is, it is that way. So, you know, despite Bob's good intentions as a doctor, I would, if I would summarize, I would just say, you know, the, the commission is behind leaving this as, you know, almost a, the ban that went into place, and to say that we do not want any commercial business, we do not want any sales except by the, the delivery for medicinal marijuana, and then figure out how to make sure that that is just medicinal, and that might have to be defined down the road if we can, because the state hasn't defined exactly what is medicinal, right? Except, it doesn't say no THC, it doesn't say, you know, predominance of CBD, right? You know, it doesn't say that, right?
Would it be some script written in the...
The question, the question is, I don't know, but... Yeah, I don't think the question is, what is medicinal cannabis, the, the question is, can one purchase it? And if you have a card, then you can purchase medicinal marijuana, and...
And that's a problem, I think, because that can mean anything.
Yeah, but Peter, you know, we're such a small county, and you know, Charles was saying, it's not that this is a huge county, and if somebody is ordering a supply of medicinal marijuana, they have to wait three hours for the van to get there, because the county's so big. It's a very small place, within a half an hour, less than I could deliver it. I don't think there should be a problem with having delivery made from an out-of-town place.
Especially given today's Amazon culture, right? Like, it's ingrained in us to be able to just order, right? It's not, it's not like it was thirty years ago.
Yeah, people are used to doing that. I'd say the only thing is that I did see that the medical marijuana business that was in town, which was not on the first floor, which was in an office doing stuff, was successful and was very highly regulated, that if for some reason we were going to consider any type of retail, I would like that to be the model we would follow. Not the storefront where people line up in the street, you know, to get in, or those pictures we saw from Canada on a, earlier in the week, with the lines around the block and everything, I mean, that's...
Everything I've seen with the conditional use, I think it's nearly impossible to put it up on the second floor of a, that's a, like, I feel like it would be very difficult to set that many conditions on the use.
I don't remember how, exactly how it was set, maybe, do you remember, Adam, or Phil?
I think it was first floor.
Was it on the first floor?
There were two of them, I, I remember one of them.
But the one that was on town, it, it was not something that was just from the street, people walked in, I mean, they had to go down a corridor or something.
It was in the back of the business center over there.
Yeah, yeah, it was not something from the street where you had, you stood, then you went outside and you smoked, or chewed, or whatever the heck you do with it.
I think at this point, though, I've read an awful lot of information, I have a lot more to go. I, I feel like I've opened Pandora's Box, and despite having thirty articles on my laptop here that are all government-issued documents.
That doesn't mean you can trust them, though.
Well, the funny thing is, they stopped writing them right after the last election, so, we can't really take comment.
Just a point of information, that Lynette Shaw was actually at the recent planning commission meeting in Fairfax, and she testified that if she's not allowed to be able to also operate a recreational business, that they will not be viable as a business. This is a point of information.
Interesting, since she was, did medicinal all those years since she was viable.
So, you're saying that the medicinal marijuana has to have the recreational, and that's what I heard anecdotally up in Mendocino County, was that people can't survive like they used to anymore. They are, they're, a lot of them said, well, we made our money, now we're retired, but we can't make any more money, because there's no market in recre, in just medicinal, they have to go for the whole enchilada, so...
We don't have to have it here.
I don't think, it's just kinda like... I don't think, it's just kind of like, as little as possible that this state requires us to do is the position of the commission. Maybe the council head would throw us something back and say, well, what do you think about this? And I, I don't know that I would move much from my position and from the fact that it's, we need, if anything, we need money for education and helping understand the impacts. Where do we find that money? It's out there. And if it could be gleaned from the state coffers that are in theory getting tax money from this cannabis, their cannabis sales, it ought to be redistributed back out to the counties for education and treatment.
Okay. So, I, yeah, I think we have, do you want to summarize? I think we got it. I mean, it's, it's sort of keep in place the, the current regulations that are related to the, related to the moratorium that's in place. No, no businesses in town related to cannabis. And delivery is allowed in town, but actually, this would be different for medicinal purposes only is what I'm hearing. I, I think for delivery, it could be, I, I think for personal use, the, personal use is personal use, like, but that's, but I, I'm not saying I'm gonna sway the whole.
It's a slippery slope.
Right, but.
If a kid could order, I mean, if he could order alcohol and say, I need it for, you know, my.
Right. Well, of course, hopefully.
My brainstem function, right? Then the kid's in the back.
Hopefully, we'd have police officers.
The, the delivery folks I've spoken to says if, if one is making a medicinal delivery in Cordera Madera, they need to present the product to someone who has the card in their hands. So, it's, you know, there is some, there's some regulation. They don't, they can't just drop it out on the, on the doorstep.
Well, so then, so I guess with, that's a bigger question. So, there's no checking of ID? Like, they can just deliver it and, and they don't need someone, a signator that's over 21? With the card, the person.
With a medicinal card, you can be, you can be 19 with your medicinal card.
Let's go to whether it's commercial, right? What are we calling?
Recreational.
Recreational. So, recreational, what are the, what are the delivery criteria?
I, I believe also they, they need the delivery person, and it's not, it's not delivered through UPS or, or a specific delivery business. There was a woman from Santa Rosa that attended the Saturday workshop, and, and she gave us some information about that. And I believe it's specific delivery. And the driver needs to hand it to the person with, you know, with an ID saying they're over 21 or a medicinal card saying they have a medicinal card.
Okay.
Does the card have that information?
The regulation of all this obviously is, is a challenge.
Right. It's the enforceability too. So, I just don't know. The, the, when it was in the council, I think you were also at that meeting when that was discussed with Diane First and everyone else, that, that the police chief didn't feel that it was gonna be enforceable. So, why put a, a law into the books that basically ultimately does, is.
Has no twist.
Yeah, so that's why I still.
There's something to say for that, yeah.
I, you know, I would like to say that we're tightly wound on this issue.
Yeah, I get it. And then, and not worth getting into other cannabis-related businesses. In terms of outdoor, any, any feedback regarding outdoor versus indoor? Also, more restrictive and just make it only indoor with the restrictions?
I would feel better if it's just indoor. You know, if somebody hears of someone growing pot, they'll jump over the fence and cut it down.
I don't know. How many neighbors do you know that grow tomato bushes?
Right. Yeah, I don't think a typical outdoor grow is gonna be visible to the outside. Basically, the person doesn't want it to be visible for.
There were those.
Then they're thieves. They're not, I mean, ultimately, you're not the provider. They're, they're adolescents that are breaking and entering and thieving. And I think that that also needs to be addressed. And I don't think that ultimately, personally, whole societies need to be held accountable because of irreverent youth, respecting property laws.
Is that also limited to six?
What's, excuse me?
For personal use, if you do it, if you grow it outside, outdoors, you're still limited to just six plants.
With, without a medicinal card, yes.
I think there's a, a concept in the law called attractive nuisance. And, and this strikes me as being an attractive nuisance.
Just.
If it's outdoors.
Yeah, just to provide all the different information. Dr. Bundy brought up in the, in the beginning, the, the, the resources that are used in growing indoor versus growing outdoors. It's just another thing to consider, whether it's water, power, and things like that, so.
I personally would not want to make it more complicated and, and a permitting issue to allow people to grow houseplants. I mean, it's just.
Right.
That's me.
We'd stay out of the mix then and not create some sort of set of regulations, but.
The top four.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
All right. So, I think we're gonna close that item. And thank you for all of your input and very well-made statements. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I might want to make a picture.
I'll take a copy. I'll take a picture.
Yeah. We'll take a five-minute break here and come back.
I want to get copies of whatever's up there.
So, it is 9:30. We're back on, and we have to take a vote if we want to get, do the minutes tonight and continue past 9:30.
I will move that we continue past 9:30 just to pass the minutes and get the reports. And then, from Adam, in case there's something you have to know.
I'll second that.
Do we have agreement, everybody? Margaret?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll do that. We have agreement, unanimous.
Unanimous, aye.
All right. So, at this point, Phil sneezing, bless him. And I believe, Charles, you were going to attend the meeting last week at town council? Or who did? Margaret, Margaret did.
So, the big occasion at the town council meeting was Pauline Engelmann's 110th birthday.
Oh, God.
Amazing.
And she was terrific. She still drives. And on the way out, she said, see you next year.
Actually, I took a little video. I haven't, if anyone wants to see it, it was great.
She was really inspirational, kind of.
Did she have any pointers?
She, you know, she said, it was so funny, because she said, people ask me what my secret to long life and good health is, and, and they wonder what it is. And I wonder too.
That's why, her attitude.
She was terrific and had a cake and flowers and all sorts of commendations. And it was great.
That's nice.
The one, the other, the big sort of thing that Todd Cusamano was very happy about was that the Central Marin Fire Joint Powers Authority Agreement between Cordera Madera and Larkspur is, will be fully operational by January 1st, if not before. And in that ass, in that venture, Cordera Madera, he said, was leading the way in, in this kind of joint venture to provide better service and save money. And they worked out difficulties along the way with PERS and IRS, and all that was worked out. So, and Todd Cusamano is gonna be the executive manager for the first year. So, that was a, a really big deal. They talked about the homeless, homelessness committee, and the portable showers were a successful thing. And in addition to providing showers, they were providing services as medical care, employment, housing. They were sort of getting people in to the system and then registering them and tracking them. So, it was more than just showers. There is an ad hoc finance committee, which was expanded with more local experts to audit revenues and specifically, it sounded like revenues from the taxes of, of businesses, and also provide feedback to the town as far as that goes on financial measures. And to make sure that the Measure E taxes that go to the state are appropriately distributed to Cordera Madera. And the wood chipper is gonna go to different neighborhoods. The first one is going to be going to Meadow Suite. So, those were the highlights of it. It was literally one hour long, the whole meeting.
Right. Painless, the wood chipper is a town wood chipper that, like, the ice cream truck goes around and.
Apparently, they have a, you know, I had a feeling, it used to be located where.
On the gravel lot.
Yeah, on the gravel lot, which is now they can't locate it there anymore because it's under construction. So, I guess they have to bring it to different communities or different neighborhoods.
Okay.
May I ask Adam a question about the gravel lot as long as it was mentioned?
No.
No? Okay.
Drive, just drive by.
I just want to know when it's gonna be done.
Oh, there was one more thing which I thought was good for our commission. The representative from SolarCraft was there. And he said that hiring on SolarCraft is open, and their goal is to change homes to zero carbon. So, he was very enthusiastic about his business.
I had to make a presentation sometime ago.
That's, that's your friend who came here?
Yeah. So, anyway, that's good. All right. Hiring, all right. Planning director, do you have anything you want to add?
No, that was a very good summary of the meeting. I was, I only stayed for the first, for the celebration, but.
The cake.
Yeah, the cake.
You had some cake and left.
I didn't have cake. I, I just really appreciate her coming. And, yeah, that's always a fun, fun evening to look forward to every year. So, she is inspirational. So, no, other than that, I did, there is a couple of things. I think, I just wanted to mention, I know Phil sent out a invitation for the Sonoma State Planning Commissioners Conference again this year. So, please just let us know if you're interested and can make that date and time. And we will, we will facilitate for, for you guys. I'm, I can't make it this year unfortunately, but Phil, I think you're gonna.
Yeah, I'm not sure. And if you do want to go, I would say, you know, sign up in the next couple of weeks because they do, they do run out of tickets.
But we, and, and just, yeah, or, or let us know and we can sign you up for, for us, right?
I will sign up for it.
Okay.
Yeah. I intended to go when I saw the agenda.
Okay, great.
I, I'm also available.
Great.
Okay.
I am not.
Okay. You have three yeses.
Well, just get back to us. It sounds like you're hedging. You don't have, you're on the spot right now. It's a Saturday. I know.
Let me talk to my four bosses.
December.
Bring them up to Rona Park and spend the day. Go, go to Amy's for lunch.
Oh.
There we go.
Visit Katati Cannabis one.
Phil too. That's, that's really, I don't, I don't have anything else to report other than the, you know, tentative agenda items coming up for the next time around.
Maybe, since we're rolling into the holidays, any specific, specific Tuesdays that people aren't gonna be here? November, December?
Yeah, we.
There's a meeting on December 25th, which I assume is gonna be.
Yeah, I should, I, thank you, Phil. That's, I think that's a good reminder. You know, tentatively, we are looking at the next meeting, November 13th, and then we are planning to have the meeting after at this point. So, it would be the week after Thanksgiving, November 27th, which works out nicely if we, if we need to have a meeting on that evening. And then we will have the first, right, the first meeting in December is December 11th.
And then nothing until January.
And then we'll, we'll cancel that next meeting. We are tentatively targeting the date of January 8th, just so you know, for the, the Aimco Robyn Drive Residential Project. And you will likely see in the month of November, a notice will go out for the environmental document, which we are preparing at this moment. So, just keep that on your radar.
They still want to do the ADUs attached to the units, the building, the.
Yeah, it's all on our website, the description and everything, if you want to take a look at the most recent plans and whatnot for that. But, you'll, you'll get notice of that going out.
No, I just have an objection to Item B for our next meeting, just for dogs. As a cat owner, I'm against segregation. I thought we put an end to that.
We, we, yeah. Every time they come in, we give a little, the cat, we give them a little discrimination speech.
Okay. Well, that's good to know that we give everybody a little hair of the dog. So, then, I would ask, does anyone have any adjustments to the minutes?
I will move the minutes as drafted.
Second.
Was the, was it adjusted, Phil, as the way you had planned?
This is a different thing of minutes that Adam and I are still working on.
Right. So, the, the minutes are from September 11th. So, it's a little bit out of order. So, the next, the next meeting, we will have the August 28th minutes put back on. And I will, I will send it to all commissioners in advance.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You saw what I returned to you. No, you didn't. You figured you'd still get it tomorrow. Okay.
All in, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We're gonna move, here, a mo, move to adjourn?
So moved.
Meeting is over.